And now I'll call this meeting to order. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Mayor Paul.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hatton.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Starkey.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lemack.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Holstie.
Here.
Mr. Weinthal.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Before we start, I just would like to take a few moments of silence in honor of Barbara Reitzman, who passed away this morning. She was a dear friend to all of us in Davie, member of the Seroptimists International of Davie, so in honor of her memory. Thank you very much. First thing, first order of business is recognition of years of service for the Davie Police Officers' Pension Board. TAD would like to recognize Chief Jack Mackey. Chief Mackey led the Davie Police Department from May 12, 1992, until his retirement on December 1, 1998. On January 1, 1999, he was appointed trustee of the Davie Police Pension Board. As a trustee, Chief Mackey took his fiduciary trustee duties to heart as he administered the plan in accordance with the documents and instruments governing the plan. He properly used his authority and discretion over the management and control of plan assets, and always acted with prudence and reasonable care. He possesses an in-depth knowledge of pension regulations, risk management, and governance of best practices, which was instrumental while serving as a trustee. He acted in good faith and in the best interests of the plan, participants, and beneficiaries. Thank you for your service, and we wish you continued success, and we'd like to present you with a plaque. Mr.? The plaque reads, "In recognition of your 26 years of fiduciary trustee duties on the Pension Board for the Town of Davie Police Pension Plan, your knowledge of pension, best practices, have benefited the town plan participants and beneficiaries. Thank you for your service." You. You were so well-loved when you were the chief, and going on to serve on the Pension Board, just reiterated what we know is your love for the Town of Davie, and we really appreciate your service.
I want to thank the Board for getting me on that Pension Board, and it's, you have a wonderful group of people leading that whole situation. We have a great, great, brilliant, and we have Paul, and we have, the guys on there are really good. You're in good stead with them. And in the short time that David Lee has worked with us, we have done good things with the Pension Board. I think they're up to 240-some million dollars. When I come on, I think it was 300 and some thousand, so they're doing good. Anyway, thank you very much, and you're going to have a good, good, good success with them because all of them take their business really to heart.
Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to ask Lieutenant Paul Ortenzo, Chair of the Davie Police Officers' Pension Board, to come up with his crew.
Thank you, Mayor. Your words summed it up perfectly. Jack, we are indebted for your service to the Board, so we are presenting you this as well to trustee Jack Mackey, in recognition of 24-plus years of dedicated service to the Davie Police Pension Board of Trustees. On a personal level, I want to thank you for your support and joining the Board, and you will be missed, and we'll probably be making a few phone calls to you for some advice.
That's okay.
So, thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Paul.
And it's wonderful to see your family here.
It's been a joy to work with you.
Maria, it's great to see you.
Okay, buddy.
Worked so well with us for so many years.
Thank you, buddy.
It's a family affair. I'm going to go on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Susan?
I'd like to pull number four, please.
Anyone else? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus four?
Motion to approve consent agenda, minus number four.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Number four is a site plan. It's a quasi-judicial item, and will the town attorney please read the title into the record?
Yes, Mayor. Site Plan SP 24-052-Pataki.
Thank you. Has the quasi been waived?
No, Mayor. Quasi has not been waived.
Okay. So then we'll have to proceed with a quasi-judicial hearing and ask for disclosures, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, I'll start. I'll put my glasses on. I've spoken to the town attorney, town administrator, Mike Evans, and Jesse Bastos from P&amp;Z, and I've read all the emails, and also David Quigley of Planning and Zoning. What about everybody else? Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I've spoke to manager Rick Lemack, Assistant Town Manager Philip Hallstate, Planning Director David Quigley, Planner Sylvia Minn, Attorney Alan Weinthal, the Clerk Evelyn Rott, Building Official William Diaz, and members of the Planning and Zoning Board, as well as, I've had hundreds of conversations with residents by phone, by email, over the past few years, including the HOA meetings, HOA MRT workshops, at the grocery store, restaurants, and at social events. I've spoken to experts in the roofing and construction business and contractors in order to educate myself. I have been in the presence, I have also seen the presentation by the applicant and their attorney that was posted. I have listened to the recordings of the Planning and Zoning and Site Plan Committee meeting, and I've reviewed all the backup to date.
Does she need to name specifically? Is that okay for her to generalize in terms of?
So the ideal of the disclosures would be material conversations with, you know, staff, the applicant, speaking with someone in passing at Publix. You don't, you don't, they don't have to disclose that. It's nice that you did. It's nice you put it for the record, but this is for material conversations related to the items, such as with myself, Mr. Quigley, Mr. Finer.
Okay. Thank you. Michelle? I would like to dis, I would like to disclose that I have had conversations with our town attorney, Alan Weinthal, the applicant's attorney, Rob Finer, our town administrator, Mr. Lemack, and I've read all the emails.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll disclose, I spoke with our town attorney, Alan Weisenthal. I spoke with Assistant Phil Holstie, and I spoke with Mr. Diaz, as well as Mr. Lemack.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I have disclosed, I spoke with the town administrator and the town attorney.
Thank you. Mr. Weinthal, do you need to go through the instructions?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
So the applicant has requested the hearing, and item number four go forward as a quasi-judicial hearing. I will go over some housekeeping rules and procedures in the quasi-judicial process as set forth in Town of Davie Resolution 2021-183. As you can see, there is a court report here in the back corner. I ask anyone who plans on speaking on this item, please speak clearly into the microphone and not speak over each other to ensure the record properly reflects your statements. Town Council, your ruling on this matter must be based solely upon the evidence presented tonight at this hearing. When making a ruling, you must state with specificity the reasons for approval, denial, or modification of the item, and your decision must be based upon competent substantial evidence. Confident substantial evidence is evidence that has established a substantial basis from which the fact that issue can reasonably be inferred. It is evidence a reasonable mind could accept as having probative weight and adequate to support a legal conclusion. The town shall present its case first. The town shall have 25 minutes to make the full presentation. Any questions and answers from council members shall not count towards the 25 minutes. The applicant shall then present its case. The applicant shall have 25 minutes to make their full presentation. Any questions and answers from council members shall not count towards the 25 minutes. I am not aware of any party intervenors in this case, but if one were to come forth, they shall have 25 minutes to make their full presentation. Any questions and answers from council members shall not count toward the 25 minutes.
Mayor, I have to say something.
I'm sorry.
I also spoke with the attorney. I'm sorry.
I thought you mentioned it.
No, not our attorney. Please, sorry.
Oh, their attorney. Thank you.
I'm going to ask again before we begin. No worries, of course. Yes. Any general members of the public wishing to speak for or against the item or submit relevant evidence shall be allowed to speak for a maximum of three minutes. Any questions and answers from council members shall not count toward the three minutes. The town staff shall have 10 minutes to make any final comments. The applicant shall have 10 minutes to make any final comments. A party intervenor shall have 10 minutes to make any final comments. At the discretion of the mayor, the applicant or the town may be permitted to respond to the closing statement of the party intervenor. A maximum of 10 minutes is allotted. The town council will conduct open deliberations of the item. The mayor shall have the discretion to reopen the proceeding for additional testimony or argument by the parties, if warranted. After deliberations, a vote shall be taken to approve. Approving conditions continue or deny the item. The town attorney will rule on all evidentiary procedural issues and objections, and advise the town council as to the applicable law and necessary factual findings. The town council and the town attorney may ask questions of persons presenting testimony or evidence at any time during the proceedings until commencement of deliberation. After each witness testifies, the town staff representative, the applicant's representative, and the party intervenor shall be permitted to question the witness, but such cross-examination shall be limited to matters about which the witness testified, and shall be limited to 10 minutes per side per witness. Members of the public are not allowed to cross-examine witnesses. All evidence of a type commonly relied upon by reasonable prudent persons in the conduct of their affairs shall be admissible. Whether or not such evidence will be admissible in a court of law in Florida, evidence that is irrelevant, immaterial, harassing, defamatory, or unduly repetitive shall be excluded. Here's say evidence may be used for the purpose of supplementing or explaining other evidence, but shall not be sufficient by itself to support a finding unless it would be admissible over an objection in a civil action in Florida. All evidence submitted on behalf of the town will be marked alphabetically. All evidence submitted on behalf of the applicant will be marked numerically. Statements of council, being myself and the applicant's attorney, Mr. Finer, shall only be considered as argument and not testimony unless myself or Mr. Finer have actual knowledge of the matters which are the subject of the statements and we are sworn in. Does town council have any procedural questions? Before I turn it over to the town clerk, I ask that town council members have any oral or written ex parte communication you wish to disclose. I understand you already gave your disclosures. If you forgot any, anytime before you vote, you must make that disclosure, okay? At this time, does anyone want to make any further disclosures? Okay. I'll now turn it over to the town clerk for swearing anyone in that willing to test, that's going to be testifying tonight. Yes?
What about outside counsel?
I don't understand the question.
Am I supposed to disclose the outside counsel? Alan knows.
No. That is not, that is not relevant to, that is not relevant to the case I hand.
Okay, thank you.
All witnesses, please stand up and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you are about to give?
Does that include people that are going to speak?
So, only people that are testifying. If you're going to speak, you don't have to get sworn in. This is just people who are going, so general members of the public, if they don't want to get sworn in, that's fine, but anyone that the town is going to call, or Mr. Finer's going to call, needs to get sworn in.
Okay, so then the people that are going to speak that are residents, that's not considered testimony?
It's considered public comment, but they're not going to be sworn on their oath.
Okay, thank you.
Because they're not going to get cross-examinated.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You may be seated. Mayor, you may proceed with the hearing.
The proceeding shall now commence. Town staff, you now have 25 minutes to present the case.
Good evening. It's David Quigley, Planning and Zoning Manager.
Get right into the mic, please.
David Quigley, Planning and Zoning Manager. First, I'd like to enter into the record the staff report dated December 12, I'm sorry, December 10, 2024. I would also like to enter into the record a package of Forest Ridge models dated April 14, 1988.
Mr. Finer, do you have any objections to that? You may want to sit up here. Actually, you don't have to run back and forth.
I'm coming.
All right.
Thank you, town attorney. Just for the record, Rod Finer with Coker &amp; Finer, 1404 South Andrews Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33316, for the applicant. No objection considering those are the documents that were sent to me earlier. We've exchanged certain documents. No objection to their admissibility.
Madam clerk, please, the site plan will be Exhibit A, and the Forest Ridge Master Plan will be Exhibit B. Thank you. David Jamaican, too. Staff report's Exhibit A, and then the site plan for Forest Ridge Exhibit B. Yep.
The subject residential lot was developed as part of a development known as Forest Ridge Single Family 6, now known as the Ridge on Nob Hill. The area is owned Planned Residential Development, or PRD. PRD is a type of zoning that was in use in the 1990s, but is no longer used for new development. The site plan for the community was approved with model homes, with each model having a specified roof type, either a flat cement tile roof, or a concrete S tile roof, or barrel tile. The proposed site plan amendment would allow the subject lot to replace the existing S tile roof on the home with a metal roof. This action would only modify the site plan as related to 2843 East Abiaca Circle, and would not change the standards for the entire community. The petition has satisfied the public participation requirements, and you can see that there's a number of comments in the, in the staff report backup. Other than that, that concludes my staff report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, plus this?
Plus what was submitted into evidence, yes, Mayor?
The applicant now has 25 minutes to present their case.
Madam Mayor, before we start, if I may, I'd like to ask Mr. Quigley some questions. I think cross-examination sounds overly antagonistic, and I don't think it's this, I don't think it's that. Mr. Quigley, how are you, sir?
Good, thank you.
Okay, so I think you testified, the master plan for Forest Ridge was approved by the town when?
The, the models are dated April 14, 1988. I'm not, I'm not sure of the exact date of the approval of the, of the plan.
Okay. And the applicant's property is known as the, you said was known as the Ridge on Nob Hill, and that's Phase 6 of Forest Ridge. Is that correct?
Forest Ridge Single Family 6, Roman numeral 6, is what it was formerly known as.
All right. And that was actually approved in 1996. Is that correct?
The, the entire area was built out over a period of 10 years, so that, that sounds about right.
Okay. Was there a separate site plan approval for the Ridge on Nob Hill?
There were, there were separate site plan approvals for the different phases of the development.
The reason why I ask that is the documents that were submitted into evidence are, that were submitted as part of your backup, were dated or shown, Forest Ridge 1, Forest Ridge 2, looked like they were dated before 1996, which is when the Ridge at Nob Hill was approved. So I was curious if those documents are part of the Ridge at Nob Hill site plan approval.
I'm, I'm not sure, when you were saying Forest Hill 1 and 2, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
The documents that were admitted into evidence as Exhibit, I think we called it B?
You're talking about the models?
Yes.
Right. I, I, I'm not sure what that was referring to. It's, it refers to parcel 1 and 2. I, I'm not sure what that refers to. It might have been something that was referred to at the time because of the master plan, and it was in, you know, in progress.
So you don't know if those related to Phase 6, which is the Ridge of Nob Hill, or not?
It's difficult to, to know for sure. The, the documents that we retained were presumably the, the master plan documents that were related to the individual, you know, pods of development that were approved over a period of years.
Okay. And the documents that were admitted into evidence, those contained architectural elevations, that's right?
That's correct.
And you're considering those architectural elevations part of the overall site plan approval?
I, it's my understanding there was, there was a master plan approval for, for the entire development, and then individual site plans for, for the different sections.
Okay. Well, you said, based upon, my understanding, do you know that for a fact, or, or review of the town records, or just that's your general understanding, because that's the procedure of how things occurred?
It's, it's my understanding based on the, the records that are, that are available. These are all, you know, these are all paper plans at, at that time that were later scanned in.
Okay. Let me ask you a couple of questions, if I could, about how the town has handled metal roof applications on homes in the past. Just in general, when someone applies for a building permit for a metal roof, does that get reviewed by the zoning department?
The, if there is a, a zoning requirement for, that would restrict the type of roof and a building permit is submitted, they should ideally be submitted to planning and zoning so that we can look at approved plans and determine their consistency.
Doesn't any building permit get routed through zoning, and if it's applicable to zoning or not, zoning might just say NA, or they do a check mark on the building permit application?
Not, not typically. There's a certain number of permits, like an electrical permit, that would have no bearing on, on zoning.
So if a metal roof came in, does that have any bearing on zoning? Or is it only if it's part of a, a master plan or a separate community?
The, the zoning review would be necessary if there is some aspect of zoning or an approved site plan that requires review.
Okay. Are you familiar with a development known as West Ridge?
Yes.
Okay. West Ridge is actually almost located across from the Ridge at Nob Hill where this property's located. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. And actually, West Ridge has controlled development where there's a guard gate, and you have to go through a guard gate if you're a member of the public to get into that development. Is that right?
I don't, I don't know that for a fact. I think you mentioned that.
I'll, I'll tell you that it is, but I understand that. And isn't it true that the town has approved metal roofs in that development without requiring site plan amendments?
That is true, but I think I had found that the, that West Ridge development, despite being a master planned type of development, did not have a specific roof style in the approved plan.
So you looked at that site plan in preparation for today's hearing?
Yes.
Did you also look at the Oak Knoll development?
That does sound familiar, yes.
Okay. Is it true that the town has approved building permits for that development without requiring a site plan amendment?
I would have to refer to my notes. I reviewed a lot of things.
You don't have your notes here with you?
I, I can pull them up.
Okay. We'll get to that, if necessary. Are you familiar with the property known as 3077 Periwinkle Circle?
I believe so, yes.
That's a home in the Forest Ridge community, right?
Correct.
Not necessarily this community for the Ridge on Nob Hill, but it isn't part of the Forest Ridge development?
Correct.
And are you aware that the town has issued a building permit to put a metal roof on that home, and that actual permit has been finalized?
I, I did research that somewhat, but it's not, it's not part of this application, so I didn't take notes on it.
Okay. If the records of the town show that a building permit was issued for that home, would that surprise you?
Depend, it depends on the circumstances. Yes, it does somewhat surprise me, but it depends on the circumstances and how it was reviewed.
And actually, to your knowledge, you know of several other residents in both the Forest Ridge and the Ridge at Nob Hill have applied to put metal roofs on their home, but they haven't because this application is pending?
I was not aware of that, no.
Okay. Let me ask you a quick question. You said that this site plan amendment would apply to this individual property owner solely. Is that correct?
Correct.
So if another person wanted to, in the, for instance, in the Ridge at Nob Hill, wanted to put a metal roof on their house, they would have to go through a site plan amendment process. Is that correct?
Correct.
The association could not apply to allow metal roofs as a whole for, say, the Ridge on Nob Hill, assuming it satisfied all building permits. Is that right?
That's correct, and the reason is, is that the, the site plan approval process requires that the, the applicant be, be the landowner. They can have an agent act on their behalf, but the landowner has to sign the application.
So there could be several other people lined up waiting to go through the same amendment at the Ridge at Nob Hill, just waiting to see how this goes beforehand, so there could end up being more metal roofs or site plan applications for metal roofs at the Ridge at Nob Hill or Forest Ridge following this hearing. Is that correct?
I suppose so.
Okay. Let me first go to address a couple of other questions. You mentioned that this project was zoned R-P-U-D, right?
P, uh, P-R-D.
P-R-D. That's Planned Residential Unit Development. Is that right?
It's called Planned Residential Development.
Okay. Are you familiar with Section 12-375 of the code? Current code?
Yes.
And do you know what that code section refers to?
It's the, includes standards for PRD developments.
Okay. That was first adopted in 2001, right?
I don't know.
Well, the town attorney and I have exchanged this, that it's the town code.
I could refresh Mr. Quigley's recollection. I will show him Section 12-375 of the town code.
I direct your attention to the bottom, which shows the code tracing table.
2001, yes.
Okay. So that was adopted after the Ridge on Nob Hill site plan was approved?
I don't know. There's some other potential factors. There may be other things that explain that. I'm not really sure.
What would be those other things that could potentially explain it?
There's, those notes are from the Municipal Code Corporation that publishes these codes. Sometimes, sometimes things don't get picked up correctly. I know that the town code was substantially overhauled in, in 1990, you know, completely new, new code, and was adopted.
And this was, and this development was, site plan for this development was approved prior to 1990?
Again, I'm, I'm not sure of the exact, when the site plan for this particular development was approved, I just know that the models and the master plan appeared to be adopted before then.
I think if you look at your staff report, you mentioned when it was approved.
I beg your pardon. I'd have to refer to that.
Excuse me. On the timing, is that correct?
So there, there is no, during cross-examination, the clock stops?
No time, okay.
Correct, yes, Mayor. And that works both ways, too.
So, just so you know, your, your staff report indicates that the site plan, Forest Ridge Single Family 6, the Ridge on Nob Hill, approved by town council on September 4, 1996.
Okay.
So with that, refreshing your recollection, that means that 12-375 for the master plan development section of the code was adopted after Phase 6, the Ridge on Nob Hill site plan was approved. Is that right?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
Sure. I apologize. It probably was a poorly worded question.
Okay. I was trying to read as well.
Yep. So since the site plan for Phase 6, the Ridge on Nob Hill, was approved in 1996, and the master plan development code, 12-375, et cetera, was adopted in 2001, that means that the Ridge on Nob Hill site plan was adopted before this 12-375 was approved. Is that right?
That appears that way, yes.
Okay. Do you know if there were any changes between the two different code sections?
Which two code sections are you talking about?
I'm sorry, the R-P-U-D and then the master plan development.
I, I don't know.
Are you familiar with chapter 37, 12-374 of the town code currently?
If, if you'll help me with the title, I-
Sure. Site Plan Amendments, I believe is what it's called.
Yes, okay, yes.
All right. All right. Um, does this project meet the criteria for those, for that section?
It doesn't seem like the correct fit. The, 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 the site plan, the issue about the site plan and who can apply is, is a, is, is the procedure. Who, who's the, who's the authority, who's, who is authorized to apply for the site plan amendment? Amendment, either an amendment or a new site plan.
All right. There's, there are sections that go through non-material changes. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So let me go through those. Um, the use of the site plan on this particular case has not changed. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. The change that's being requested for a metal roof does not require a variance or similar action from Town Council approval. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. This change for the roof, the, the, to allow a metal roof is not impacting any of the setbacks. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
Okay. The change to the metal roof is not impacting lot coverage. Is that correct?
Correct.
The change for the metal roof is not impacting principal and accessory buildings, the spacing between principal and accessory buildings. Would you say that's also correct?
Correct.
Okay. The metal roof is not changing the height of the building or structure by more than five percent. Isn't that correct?
Uh, correct.
Okay. The gross floor area of the home is not increasing with the metal roof. Isn't that correct?
That, that's correct.
Okay. This is not proposing, the metal roof is not proposing a new or modification to the home? Expansion of the home?
It's not an expansion, no.
Okay. It's not changing the lot configuration?
No.
It's not changing any of the open space within the, this community?
No.
It's not changing of the landscaping material that's in this community?
No.
It's not changing, to the best of your knowledge, the value of improvements or amenities is not being substantially reduced?
That's correct.
Okay. And this is, the change that's being made now is not inconsistent with a declaration of covenants that the developer gave the town. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I would submit to you then that those are all the criteria set forth in 12-374 subsection B. That goes through it. It says that if the answer to no is all those questions, then the change is deemed a non-material change. So would you agree with me that then that this change for the site plan is deemed a non-material change?
It, it is, it may be a non-material change, but that, there's also more to the section that deals with the level of review, whether it's a staff level review or Town Council.
I, I, I agree with you entirely. Even we can, the, the code provides that the administration can choose to take a non-material change, site plan amendment to Town Council. I agree with you on that. Um, and who gets to decide whether the site plan amendment gets approved or not. I, I'm not debating that with you.
Correct.
Um, but in terms of the criteria of what makes a non-material change or not, it seems to me from the discussion we just went through, that section 12-374B shows that this to be a non-material change.
So Mr. Finer, I, I understand where you're going with this, but the cross-examination is based upon Mr. Quigley's testimony and, and this is completely, completely out of scope of his testimony. So I know where you're going with it, but I'm, I'm gonna have to stop you there.
That is within your prerogative on the instructions and the ruling that you made. Uh, no further questions. Thank you.
That's the cross-examination.
It's done. So now the, the applicant-
Now the applicant has twenty-five minutes to present his case.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I will get up and make a brief presentation and then we will call only two witnesses. One is Twee Turner, who the town attorney and I have stipulated is an expert witness in planning, and the other one will be my client herself.
And Mayor, I've made copies of the expert witness's CV. Mrs. Roy, if you could please pass those out, and I have no objection to the expert witness being classified as expert witness.
And then I would also, just as a pure housekeeping matter, ask that the documents I had submitted to the town attorney previously, which primarily consisted of the backup that you already had in your backup, which has already been admitted as exhibit B, plus some of the documents I used in the planning and zoning testimony be deemed part of the record.
I have no objection to that. Mrs. Roy, can you also pass those out? Mr. Finer, you may want to give her a couple of minutes to pass those out.
Of course. I would just ask at the time stop while she does that.
And in that interim, I might mention, I, I believe I spoke with the town clerk about this also. I want to add that to my disclosure.
Perfect. Anyone could continue adding disclosures up until you vote. So, so Mayor, yes, I guess we'll take five minutes to call a stop. Let Mrs. Roy pass those out. There should be six copies of each. Okay. Some of them are duplicates to what was in the town's backup. That's correct.
If everyone's seen, I can go, Madam Mayor, if you'd like.
You may continue.
All right. Thank you. So as I said at the beginning, I represent Randy and Mo Pataki. They own the home at 2843 East Aviava Circle. It is a single-family home, as you heard from the cross-examination, that's located in the Ridge at Knob Hill, which is a single-family community. It is part of the Forest Ridge overall development, which is made of about six or seven different phases. They are subject to two different homeowners associations, the Forest Ridge HOA as well as the Ridge on Knob Hill HOA. I will tell you that the town attorney and I have had a discussion about this. You'll hear some comments in my testimony about the HOA. I recognize and stipulate that the HOA is not part of the enumerated code requirements, nor should it impact really your decision that you're making today because your decision has to be based on the code requirements. It's merely for informational purposes or your edification. Um, and if you want to get confirmation from that from your town attorney after I'm done, please feel free to do so.
That, that's correct. And before you guys vote, I was going to make that little spiel and I will read into the record the town code that you must base your decision upon. But yes, just a reminder, the town of Davie and the various HOAs are two very separate entities.
So with that being said, my clients purchased their single-family home in 2010. They are actually the second owner of that home. There was another owner before them that purchased the property in nineteen ninety-eight. They have not replaced the roof. They have not done anything, nor did the prior owners. So you're looking at a roof on their home that is about twenty years old and most of the roofs haven't been replaced in that neighborhood. They're getting, the roofs are either at the end of the useful life or getting close to the end of their useful life. Um, they are here and they need a new roof on their home. But rather than doing a tile roof, they've done some research and looked around and they would like to do a metal roof on their home, which will match all colors and rules and regulations given by the HOA. Um, with, so with that being said, um, I will say as part of the backup you got from the staff material in this, both the master association and their sub-association have approved the installation of metal roofs now. Originally, they were prohibited. Those documents were amended that the HOA does not prohibit metal roofs anymore. And there's several reasons why. Uh, twenty years ago, when this property was developed, metal roofs were very, very different than what metal roofs are today. Um, today, metal roofs actually have a much longer lifespan than a typical S tile roof or a concrete flat tile roof, which is what the two roofs were that were shown as part of the site plan. They are more fire resistant. They're more wind resistant, so they're better off for hurricanes. If someone wants to install hurricane shutters on them, okay? Um, they can clip on to the seams of the metal roof rather than being forced to drill into the roof. So they make for a better installation of solar panels if someone wanted to do solar panels on a metal roof. They are energy efficient in that they reflect sunlight, so they reduce people's air conditioning bills. Um, they are made from a portion of recycled materials where the other materials that are involved in this community are not. So it's a little bit better for the environment. About twenty to twenty-five percent of metal roofs are made from recycled material. They are less maintenance and because they're also made from recycled materials, they are more environmentally friendly. Interestingly enough, the cost of installing a metal roof over an S tile roof or a concrete style roof is about twenty to twenty-five percent more. It costs more to install the metal roof than it would these other type of roofs. That's important because when you look at value of home, things along those lines that people might say, wait a minute, what's going on here? This is a better improvement than what's currently in the, in the site plan amendment. Um, and as you'll hear, um, my client has researched building code and I will tell you that several other people have applied for building permits in this community and other communities. They have not been approved because they have to go through the site plan amendment as what we're doing right now. But there are other individuals, and actually there are, there are emails in your backup that were sent by other individuals in this community and other members of the Forest Ridge community who say, I'm waiting for them to finish their process. I want to put a metal roof on my house too. And as a matter of fact, there's one person who has already applied and gotten permits in the Forest Ridge Association. There are two other people whose building permits were rejected, who want to do metal roofs in the Forest Ridge Association because they need to go through the site plan amendment process. And I don't know why they didn't. Maybe they didn't realize it or for whatever reason. I can't comment on that. As you heard me talk to with Mr. Quigley about this, section 12 dash 374 governs site plan modifications. And in that subsection B governs, governs when a site plan modification is deemed not a material change to the overall site plan. And it lists, as you heard, because I went through them all, about through L, so ten or twelve different criteria of what's required, and none of those were satisfied, which meant that the way the code reads, it says, if you meet one of these criterias, you're not deemed a non-material change, right? Sort of in the negative. If you meet one of the criteria, you're deemed a material change. In this particular case, we met none of the criteria because we walked through it. So the adding of a metal roof to the site plan or amending the site plan to simply add a metal roof, doing nothing more, is really a non-material change to the site plan. Um, similarly, section 12 dash 375, and you'll hear from this from our planner in more detail, governs the master plan development. Now that did take the place of the PRD. And I will tell you, there's some language in section 12-375, and I can honestly say I looked to try and see the old code and I didn't see it. Um, but this code section states that one of the purposes is to encourage harmonious and coordinated development of the site, and that's in section 12-375. I don't know if that was in the old site plan approval code section or not. So that code section may not even be applicable to what we have here because we're amending the site plan under that old zoning designation. Regardless, even if it is applicable, we would assert that this does encourage a harmonious and coordinated development of the overall project. And how can I say that? Well, if you look throughout the town in what appears to be neighborhoods, right? Um, you see tile roofs interspersed with metal roofs. They exist next to one another. They exist two doors down. It's a seamless integration in these neighborhoods. West Ridge is a perfect example, which is basically right across the street on the west side of Knob Hill. This development is on the east side of Knob Hill. Oak Knoll is such a development. The developments that are right next to Davie Golf Course, I, I know because I've driven through those, are similar that way. Um, there are other developments that can go through. My development in Davie allows metal roofs next to concrete roofs as well. Um, so it is, this is a seamless development right now and it maintains an enhanced community and a coordinated community. If the homes have the same footprint or near the same footprint, the same style exterior elevations but for the roof and the roof is a little bit different in terms of a metal roof versus a tile roof, it's still a harmonious and continual development. As a matter of fact, the new metal roofs might even enhance values in, in the neighborhood. So we would assert that, and you'll hear from our expert on this and then my clients, both my clients, Randy and Mo, will want to speak, that this ticks all the boxes that are required for a site plan approval and we're gonna request that you approve this development. And again, let me say this, though it's not relevant to the decisions because it's not part of the code, my clients did the right thing when doing this. They went to their sub-association, they went to the master association, both have approved this. They've sent letters saying that they approved it subject to the site plan being amended. And with that, I'm going to call up Twee Turner as my next witness, just to refresh the Town Council's recollection. She has already and is deemed to be admitted as an expert. Her CV is part of the record. So I will instruct Ms. Turner not to go through her lengthy CV with you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Thank you for having me. My name is Twee Turner, pronounced one-two-Twee. Um, I'm with Turner Planning Solutions, addressed at sixty-two Wimbledon Lake Drive Plantation, Florida, three-three-three-two-four. As you already have my CV, I'm a certified planner with American Institute of Certified Planner. I'm here for the client. The request before you tonight is amend the site plan for a planned community to allow metal roof when the original architectural elevations were submitted at the time of development over ten to fifteen years ago. And, um, based on the development and zoning designation from PRD, um, it, you know, it looks like from, I'm familiar with the architectural plans and what was approved and some, based on section twelve-three-seven-dash-three-seven-four, um, the criteria, you know, it, it, that the building is not changing. The, the setbacks are not changing and the lot size, there's no addition to the residential units. It's only changing the roof, which is consistent with the Florida Building Code. So, you know, as Mr. Finer was going through the list with Mr. Quigley, this is deemed a non-material change to the site plan. So, and also on top of that with section twelve-three-dash-three-seven-five and the master plan development is, you know, quote, encouraged a harmonious and coordinated development of the site. It's considered, you know, this is part of the landscape. It's just the, the roofing, it allows for various type of roofing materials. So my, from reading the code and looking at the plans and, um, I concluded that from my professional planning opinion, I've been doing this quite a while. I'm really not that old. Uh, that, that, meaning all the required code for a site plan amendment and for the metal roof to be allowed. And I think it's, will add a, you know, it'll be, add something to the community from a harmonious and coordinated development. That's my conclusion.
One question, Ms. Turner. Do you believe that amending the site plan to add a metal roof is harmonious with section twelve-dash-three-seven-five?
Yes.
Okay. No further questions.
We have no cross-examination.
Is that question repeated? Was it loud enough, do you think, to pick it up?
You got it? Did you, Mr. Court Reporter, did, off the record, did you get my question that I asked Ms. Turner? Sure. Ms.- Sure. Ms. Turner, in your professional planning opinion, is the site plan amendment, you need to come up and speak in the microphone, is the site plan amendment to allow a metal roof consistent with Section 12-375 of the town code?
Yes, that's correct.
I'm now going to call, which one? Mo Pataki up as our next witness. State your name, address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Morris Pataki. I live at 2843 East Abiaca Circle. We've lived in Forest Ridge for 14 years, as Rod stated. This is my wife and my request for a site plan amendment. If the town were acting fairly toward us and other residents of Forest Ridge, we would not need this site plan amendment. Many months ago, after polling all homeowners in Forest Ridge twice, our HOA board voted to amend its architectural guidelines to allow for standing seam metal roofs. The HOA board was told at that meeting that allowing metal roofs would require a site plan amendment. Our HOA's attorney then contacted the town on several occasions to inquire about the site plan amendment for the entire association, and his calls were never returned. My wife and I were then advised in a meeting with the town that not only was a site plan amendment required, but that each owner that wanted a metal roof had to go through the expense and process of a site plan amendment individually. Even though, if you look at the site plan amendment, it is not an individual site plan amendment for our home, it is a site plan amendment for our entire sub-association. We have already spent thousands of dollars on this process as the town required. As part of the process to amend the site plan, we looked for other planned communities that had homes with metal roofs. And as you heard, we did not have to look far. There are several planned communities in Davie that allow metal roofs. Across Nob Hill from our home are the Ridgeview Lake Estates and West Ridge neighborhoods with, which both have homes with metal roofs. As part of that process, we obtained the site plan and elevations for West Ridge from the town, which I would like to submit into evidence. Those are, those are the West Ridge.
Okay, this is not going to be admitted into evidence. All evidence needed to be submitted 24 hours in advance.
Those are the West Ridge site plans, including the elevations for West Ridge. Mr. Quigley testified that he did not require a site plan amendment in West Ridge because the roofs in West Ridge on the elevations did not designate a roof material. That is wrong. They all say tile roofs, just like the elevations in Forest Ridge. They are identical. The town has approved those multiple permits for metal roofs in West Ridge without a single requirement of a site plan amendment. Just like Forest Ridge, those site plans itself are silent as to roof type, but the model elevations, the model elevations all say tile roofs. Why were none of the homeowners in West Ridge required to spend thousands of dollars on this process that my wife and I are currently engaged in? There is one homeowner in Forest Ridge who was unaware of the town's arbitrary site plan amendment requirement and simply requested a permit for a metal roof. The town then confirmed with our HOA that the roof was approved, and the town then approved the permit. So there is now one metal roof in Forest Ridge, so we will not be the first. Clearly, requiring a site plan amendment for a change in roof material regardless of planning documents is not normal behavior for the town. In fact, the elevation submitted by the developer for Forest Ridge identified each home with either a flat tile roof or an S tile roof, as was mentioned earlier by the town planner. But now, 35 years after those elevations were prepared, homes throughout the planned community have different roofs than were indicated in those elevations. And not a single one of those homeowners who changed their roof material was ever required to go through this process. I believe we are the only homeowners in Davie who have ever been told that they need a site plan amendment for a change in roof material. Now, the town has an opportunity right now to correct its mistake of requiring a site plan amendment, and could state that we and the other Forest Ridge homeowners, including the several that submitted permits for a metal roof, should be allowed to go through the normal permitting process. Absent that, you should approve this site plan amendment so that we can get our new metal roof, like the owners in West Ridge, and at 3077 Periwinkle Circle in our own neighborhood.
Mr. Pataki, one question?
Sure.
Just so it's clear for the town. Will your, the metal roof will be installed by a licensed roofing contractor?
Oh, absolutely.
And it will meet all requirements of the Florida Building Code?
Not only that, it will also meet the requirements of our HOA, which has indicated that only standing seam metal roofs in colors that are compliant with the architectural design plan that is already in place, our roof will comply with all of those requirements.
All right, thank you. Madam Mayor, I'm now going to ask Ms. Pataki to come up, and then that'll conclude our case in chief, but for rebuttal.
Hi, my name is Randy Pataki, and I live at 2843 East Abiaca Circle. This is our request for a site plan amendment. My husband pointed out that the town has not required a site plan amendment to change roof material for residents in other planned communities with the same site plans and elevations that we have. The town has also not required site plan amendments for one homeowner in Forest Ridge, who now has a properly permitted roof. There are several homeowners here tonight who may oppose the site plan amendment. But there are 1,784 homes governed by the Board of Forest Ridge Master Association, and every homeowner was given an opportunity to vote and express a position regarding allowing a standing seam metal roof. 450 people voted. 312 people voted in favor of having a standing seam metal roof, and then the association approved it. That's almost 70 percent of the people who responded. The HOA board didn't have to take this poll for metal roofs, but they wanted people to feel heard and wanted to hear what to do. The duly-elected HOA board then voted to alter our guidelines to allow a standing seam metal roof. If the town requires us to amend our site plan to obtain a metal roof and then votes against it, then the town is deciding to stand in the shoes of our association and undo their vote. I reviewed the documents that the town submitted before this hearing, and those documents are labeled as elevations. None of them are labeled as site plans. I've brought a copy of the site plans for our development. I know we can't introduce additional evidence, but I have the site plan for Forest Ridge, and on the site plan, there's no mention of any roof material at all. Each sub-association in Forest Ridge has its own site plans and elevations. So we live in Nob Hill, and these are the, these are the site plans for our specific section. The town's documents tonight do not include elevations for any home in our sub-association, let alone one that requires a roof material. It's not just West Ridge planning documents that are the same as the planning documents as our neighborhood. It's other documents, it's other neighborhoods as well. Ridgeview Lake Estates and many other neighborhoods throughout Davie. All those planned communities have homes with metal roofs, and none of those homeowners were forced to procure a site plan amendment. We're asking the town to recognize that we do not need a site plan amendment. We're asking the town to allow us to admit, to obtain a permit for a metal roof because no other homeowner has ever had to apply for a site plan amendment to change the roof material. There are several homeowners in my neighborhood who have already applied for permits for a metal roof, but their permits are on hold or are rejected, presumably because the town intends to force them to go through the same process. We're asking for the town to approve their permits without the need for a site plan. And as we mentioned, the town has already allowed one home in my neighborhood to obtain a metal roof without amending a site plan. So that the town doesn't apply the site plan rule arbitrarily, it makes sense for the town to allow us and the other permit seekers to obtain a permit for a metal roof without amending a site plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the town council. That concludes our case in chief.
Okay, thank you. At this point, any member of the public wishing to speak for or against this item may come forward. You must state your name and address for the record. Make sure you have filled out the speaker sheet. If you haven't, you must do that before you leave. You'll have three minutes to speak, and what I'd like you to do, so that we don't have to wait for each one to get up, if you want to speak, get into the center lane, the center aisle, I think I'm driving the center lane, the center aisle, and form a line, and then you can come up and speak one at a time. Don't all rush. So I'm seeing now that only two people are going to speak from the public. Okay, there you go.
Good evening, members. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Enrique Suarez, last name S-U-A-R-E-Z. I live at 9602 Regret's Court, Forest Ridge, Davie, Florida 33328. I'm only here tonight because I'm one of those applicants that applied for a metal roof, myself and my wife, who also is a business owner in the city of Davie. She couldn't be here tonight, unfortunately, because she's running her business. But we both wanted to be here present today, just to see if the board can consider to change the site to improve our community, our homes, requesting our metal roof hopefully gets approved tonight, and we can move forward. That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Moises Azale. I live at 7541 East Regret's Court, same community that is requesting this change. And the only item that I want to add is that the State of Florida passed a law that any metal roof installed to protect properties cannot be negated. I'm not a lawyer, I'm just a regular homeowner, but that just happened in this last new law that the State of Florida passed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Chapani. I live at 2763 East Abiaca Circle, just about a few houses down from the Pataki's. And respectfully, I'm opposed to this amendment. I heard all this stuff about codes and whatnot. What we're really talking about is aesthetics. And when I found out about it, I went to this Periwinkle Circle home, and I got pictures. I know you can't consider it as evidence, but this home was brought up in evidence, and so I can give you these pictures as demonstrative aids. And take a look at it.
I'll object to that, considering the same ruling for West Ridge.
It's not evidence, it's a demonstrative aid.
Give me one second, hold on.
For you, and if, your lawyer will know that demonstrative aid does not count as evidence, but you can look at it.
Give me one second. I'm going to withhold ruling on that. You can continue speaking.
Okay, well, let me just put on the table there, and if you decide to, decide to look at it, please do. I have one for everybody. It looks horrible when you look at it next to the homes with concrete tile. And that's really what we're talking about here. Nobody disputes that a metal roof will provide safety, but it looks horrible. And we're not talking about West Ridge or Long Lakes Branches or any of that. We're talking about the ridge on Nob Hill. That's what we're talking about. So all that other stuff is just red herrings, smoke and mirrors. This is about the ridge on Nob Hill, and the one house that's in Forest Ridge is in a different part of the Forest Ridge community. This house, when you look at this picture, you wouldn't want it in your neighborhood. So please, don't approve it in mine. I'm an original owner. I think I was the number six person who bought in that neighborhood, in the ridge on Nob Hill. The value of our homes since we first moved in have gone up fivefold in 25 years. There's a reason for that, and that's because of the way the neighborhood looks. For any of you who have driven through that neighborhood, I know Ms. Starkey, I know you have, that neighborhood is awesome. And we don't have a gate, we don't have a guard, but the value of our homes have gone up tremendously because of the way it looks, the way it looks now, the current way it looks. During the housing crisis, when all the other homes and such were having trouble selling, not our neighborhood, you, those houses do not stay on the market very long in our neighborhood because of the way it looks now. And contrary to what you may have heard, there have been numerous homeowners who have already gotten their house, roofs replaced, and they did it with concrete tile roofs, and it looks fabulous. I live a couple houses down from them. I like the Pataki's. I don't agree with what they're doing, and I don't want that roof in our neighborhood. It will look horrible. Please, thank you.
I'm going to make a ruling, Mayor. So the rules for evidence for general members of the public are different for applicants. Section 6F4, any general members of the public wishing to speak for or against the item or submit relevant evidence shall be allowed to speak for a maximum of three minutes each. Any questions or answers between the general members of the public and the council members of the board shall not count towards the three, the three minutes. So that he could submit that into evidence because he's a general member of the public, and the rules of evidence for them are different. So, Madam Clerk, if someone could hand that to her.
I'll just reiterate the objection for the record.
Understood.
Understanding what your ruling is.
Understood. If, if, let's, Mayor, do you want her to continue speaking, or would you like to look at what was presented?
No, she can speak.
Okay. So ma'am, you may, you may come forward and speak while the town clerk's office hands out the evidence.
Okay. My name is Lisa Wilson. I live in Forest Ridge. Do I need to say my address?
Could you speak into the mic clearly?
Yes. Do I need to say my address?
Yes, please.
9607 Sugar Pines Court in Forest Ridge. I am not opposed to residents getting metal roofs in our community, mainly because of what an earlier resident just mentioned about a law that was put into place. And that does not pertain to the town of Davie, we're well aware. That pertains to HOAs. So HOAs cannot prohibit people from doing that. The other reasons why I am opposed would be some of the things that have been raised here, such as other communities. So surrounding HOAs, such as West Ridge, have site plans that do match ours, and I would like to submit that site plan for, for review. Because that does say specifically in their elevation, tile roofs. And they were able to get their homes have metal roofs without having to change a site plan. So I would just like for you to be able to review that as total evidence for you to look at. I understand that not everybody's going to agree on whether or not a metal roof would be appropriate in a community, or a tile roof would be more appropriate. Everybody's viewpoint of how something looks is going to be different. However, the town of Davie allows in communities, planned communities, metal and tile. Therefore, I see no reason why it can't allow that in Forest Ridge. Thank you.
And Mayor, yes, she has the right to submit this as a general member of the public into evidence. Is this the only copy?
It's okay.
Well, I have to get it up to the clerk's office.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Seidel. I live at 9055 Southern Orchard Road. It's in the Southern Orchard community of Forest Ridge. I've lived in my, this Forest Ridge community for, since 19, what's it, '90, as first in the old Oak Park, and then I was original owner in Southern Orchard. I've had a connection to this community, and I'm looking not to be repeating stuff that has already said. I'm coming at a different angle. As was brought up before, as the Florida Legislature has spoken about hardening houses of public policy to be able to put metal roofs on. Metal roofs do lower your homeowner's insurance, which at these days, of what the costs are of owning a house, it's more expensive to put on, a lot more expensive to put on than a, a traditional barrel towel roof, which is good, but the metal roofs are even better for hurricane resistance. I also own a place in Ocean Reef down in Key Largo, and I can tell you through my experience in the Ocean Reef community, which is a luxury community of houses of lots, a lot more than here in the town of Davie, they have metal roofs in a combination with barrel roofs, whatever the owner wants because it's approved. Marone County strongly prefers the metal roofs because it's hurricane resistant. And after you receive all these pictures on the national news going through, and especially my experience down the Keys with Hurricane Irma, metal roofs held up. They're not the old metal roofs that used to be. They're strong and they're hurricane resistant. So I can tell you, for citizen insurance from my place down the Keys, I pay lower interest because our community, we have metal roofs in it. So I look at you to, please, look at this as a different way. Metal roofs are harmonious to in the community. It will only increase the values in Forest Ridge, and it will be, you know, it's already in the town of Davie. You go down the inner coastals, I did last, this last weekend, you see metal roofs in all these high-end neighborhoods all along. It, it works for hurricane protection. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, seeing no one else, I'm gonna close the public portion of the meeting. I'm gonna allow town staff to have 10 minutes to make a final comments.
No comments.
No comments. Applicant, you have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I endeavor, you know, give a lawyer, give a lawyer a microphone and God knows they'll use up all their time.
Yeah, well, you're, you're clicking already, you're down five seconds.
I will endeavor to be much quicker than that. You heard several of the members of the public talk about the Florida statute. I include that as part of my backup. I will, again, the town attorney and I have spoken about that. Again, it is very clear that the Florida statute, all it says is, it says that no HOA can adopt a law that prohibits a metal roof. It doesn't say anything about the town or any governmental entity. But I would say that the legislature in its infinite wisdom has made that state statute retroactive. And if you know anything about the legislature, they very rarely make things retroactive. It's always usually going forward. So when the legislature does something, making it retroactive, it's sort of, they deem it as a sort of high priority. Take that for what you will. Again, it's not applicable to you and your decision-making, it's applicable to HOAs. With that being said, let me delve and be a little legal to begin with. The law governing site plan and site plan amendments is well-established by the Florida Supreme Court about 20 or 30 years ago. This leading case on that case is the, what's called the Park of Commerce case. The law states that if there's substantial competent evidence that you meet the criteria in code and there's no competent substantial evidence that you don't, then the applicant has satisfied and met their burden of proof and they're entitled to an approval. All right? That's, that's the general law on site plan approvals and site plan amendments. And that is the, the sort of lens in which we are here today. With that being said, you've heard from my cross-examined of Mr. Quigley that we meet the criteria for a non-material change on section 12-375 of the code, or section 12-374 of the code. And you've also heard from our planning expert witness that we meet the criteria in section 12-375 of the code. Those are the two relevant provisions of code subject to my reservation about 12-375 earlier saying, with, with that being said, I won't repeat that. What's important is that there's no testimony whatsoever, no competent substantial evidence from staff or anyone that says the code has not been satisfied or that any of the criteria in code has not been satisfied. You've also heard testimony that staff has issued a building permit in the Forest Ridge community and other communities in this area where there's a mix of tile roofs and metal roofs. And that coexists. Again, you've heard testimony from Tweed Turner, who's, again, a status set expert, who's, by, and by that nature, testimony is deemed competent substantial evidence, that the site plan amendment meets all the criteria in the code for a site plan amendment. Interestingly enough, there's nothing in the code which talks about aesthetics one way or the other that way. There's nothing that says compatibility or whatever else. And, and with all due respect to the gentleman who was complaining about the home in Periwinkle, who showed you the picture of that, I can understand why when he says that, if he says it in his opinion, by the way, and that's not competent substantial evidence, but his opinion, it doesn't match the community or is aesthetically, well, that's the first one. There always has to be a one, right? There always has to be the first person that says, I want a setback for my pool or I'd like a setback for the building of an addition to my home where they come before a variance or something. There always has to be the first one and then other homeowners would follow. And in this particular case, we've already gotten demonstrable proof that other homeowners will follow with what my clients are doing. One, there's the existing home. And you heard testimony or a public comment that there are at least two or three other homeowners that want to follow suit and do this and add additional metal homes to the neighborhood. When you start adding more metal homes to the neighborhood and they're interspersed, all of a sudden it doesn't become an aesthetic. I saw it, doesn't become anything. One of the things that I think is important to recognize is that when you're talking about the provision in the code that talks about a comprehensive neighborhood together, you have to look towards trends. And the trend in this case is more and more people are wanting to put on metal roofs. As you've heard, they're much better than what they were. People are lined up to do it. It's a more money than a regular roof and it's a better investment. So I want to talk about that. I also want to talk about again, though not portion of the code nor relevant to your decisions, both the master HOA and the sub-association HOA have sent letters to the town saying, we don't object to this. We're in, they have said, we're in favor of metal roofs, but they say, we do not prohibit metal roofs in our area. Again, I would just point out that, and the town attorney has instructed you in the beginning, that the public comment is not considered substantial competent evidence. And that's also based on City of Hialeah Gardens versus Miami Dade Charter Foundation. So with that being said, again, harmonious and coordinated development, which is in the master plan community, those terms aren't defined in code anywhere. I looked in the definition section, I looked in the plan development section. Those aren't then, but harmonious development takes, as I said, takes into account development trends. You know, we don't develop properties the same way we did in the 80s anymore. Trends have changed, you know, things have changed. An example might be a kitchen that was French country wood is now, wants to be sleek and modern gray. Now granted, that's on the inside, but trends change in development. That applies to outside, it applies to roofs, it applies to everything. And those need to be taken into account when you talk about a harmonious development. And in this particular case, we've already seen, the more metal roofs you get, the more harmonious the development was gonna be. And we already know people are in line to do that. So with all that being said, I'd like to just summarize by saying, you know, I'll go, I'll circle back to what I talked about in the beginning. We're here in a quasi judicial function. The law in a quasi judicial function is if you meet the criteria and there's no evidence that you haven't met the criteria, the applicant is entitled to an approval one way or the other. In this particular case, there's no evidence in the record before you today. No one's testified, no one submitted documentary evidence one way or the other that shows that we have not met any code criteria. In fact, we presented testimony that, in fact, we have met all the code criteria and that this is a non-material change. So with that being said, we would respectfully request that you approve the site plan amendment and allow my client to move forward with their building permit following all town requirements for permitting and all state laws required for permitting to install the metal roof on their property.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to, going to counsel deliberation.
Mayor, if, if I may, just reiterate a couple of things. I know there's a couple of late disclosures, so if anyone has any late disclosures, now's the time. Also, would like to read into the record, Town of Davie Code of Orange 12-375, master plan developments for what, based upon your deliberation and vote later today, that the item in front of you encourage harmonious and coordinated development of the site considering the natural features, pedestrian and vehicle circulation and land use relationship with surrounding properties in the general neighborhood, including the overall aesthetic appearance of the master plan development. And I know some members of the public spoke about metal roofs being stronger than non-metal roofs. That, that is not up for discussion when you guys deliberate. I will repeat that. It's encourage harmonious and coordinated development of the site considering the natural features, pedestrian and vehicle circulation and land use relationship with surrounding properties in the general neighborhood, including the overall aesthetic appearance of the master plan developments. Whether or not a metal roof is stronger than a shingle roof, barrel tire roof, all roofs that are built in the town of Davie will have, be permitted per the Florida Building Code and will meet the minimum for the Building Code requirements. Does anyone have any questions of me?
Mr. Town Attorney, if I may?
Go ahead.
Would you also reiterate record 12-378, which talks about master plan development approval process? And if you want to just read the portion that talks about modifications of that site plan, I do believe that is also relevant. I have it here if you'd like to see it.
Yeah, let me take a look. You said 12-378? Can you give me five minutes to look at this?
Yeah.
Are you asking me to read in the entire paragraph or just the first sentence?
That's up to you.
Okay. I'll, I'll read in 12-378, the first sentence. All master plans submitted shall be preceded by a pre-application conference with planning and zoning division staff. Hold on, the second sentence, sorry. Master plans and master plan modifications shall be reviewed and approved pursuant to the site plan review process and site plan modification process, respectively as set forth in sections 12-371 and 12-375.
374.
374, you are correct. I'll, I'll read that last one in. Master plan and master plan modifications shall be reviewed and approved pursuant to the site plan review process and site plan modification process, respectively as set forth in sections 12-371 and 12-374.
Thank you, sir.
Council members, if you would like to make a comment, please ensure that your microphone is on and articulate why you are voting for or against the item. And if you're making a motion, properly articulate it. Since it's your district, we'll let you start, Susan.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few questions that I'd like to ask. First of all, to Alan Weinthal, our town attorney. Do you recall that I inquired if I would have a conflict of interest in voting on this matter when we first applied or responding to an HOA survey some time ago? And what was your answer?
You do not have a conflict of interest in voting on this matter. As a matter of fact, as a town council member being here tonight, you must vote on the item in front of you as you do not have a conflict of interest.
Okay. And then again, didn't I ask again to reiterate, if it ever came before me, would I have a conflict of interest in voting on the matter?
You, you have no conflict of interest tonight. You may vote on the item in front of you. And being that you are here and you have no conflict of interest, you, you must vote.
Yeah. And I recall that you said, since I'm one homeowner out of 1,500-plus homes and I don't inure any benefit, then I don't have a conflict of interest, although I've been accused of that by a few people.
I will reiterate that. I did the analysis. You do not have a conflict of interest tonight. You may vote on the item.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I always check with you. Also, later, when I learned that the individual homeowner had filed a permit, I had asked you. Also, as our town attorney, can any one council member or singularly mayor deny or approve a site modification?
No, ma'am. This requires a majority vote. And as there's five of you, three people need to vote for or against the item for it to pass or fail.
Okay. I've also been accused of denying it. So I wanted to bring that. Okay, second of all.
Is that relevant to this discussion?
So, oh. I just wanted to make sure that it's clear to the record that we act as a collective body, whether we vote for it against an item, we singularly cannot deny or approve. Okay. What was your legal opinion regarding the Florida statute 720.3045 in which some of the residents, even here and in the backup, it was written that we basically, that they, we couldn't deny it, is what they had been told. And that was what they had indicated, that the governor, since, by the virtue of the governor's signature, that no one can deny a metal roof, period.
So I, yes, I will give direction to council. It's Florida statute 720.3035. I'm aware of the state statute that was passed the recent legislative session. That refers to HOAs. I cannot opine on the HOA as I am now HOA attorney. So that new legislative initiative and that statute does not force you to vote a certain way.
And I think, Mr. Finer mentioned that as well.
Yeah, it's my turn now, thank you.
Yes, I know, but I'm making a clarification.
Yeah. The other part to that bill, and I'm, I have it in front of me now, thank you, Mayor, is that if the HOA governing documents allow an HOA or its architectural or construction improvement or other similar committee, A R Cs, as they're known, that they had to meet the minimum standards of the building officials. I mean, South Florida Building Code, basically. And then it says, allows the H R, HOA. It goes on to say, HOA or A R C is required a parcel owner to adhere to an existing unified building scheme regarding the external appearance of the structure or other improvements on the parcel. It further states that the roof systems recognized by the Florida Building Code which meet the A S C E 7-22 standards. So how would you interpret that? That if it had a building scheme that was already incorporated and it met the South Florida Building Code, that, that was sufficient?
All right. I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I fully understand the question. But I will say, any, any roof built in Davie will have to meet the Florida Building Code. They have to pull a permit, they have to get inspected. The building official, one of his staff will go out there and inspect it.
Right. So all things given equal, it has to meet the building code.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's what the stipulation in the Florida, I mean, in the recent legislation said. If, for instance, it was a lesser, around the state of Florida, for instance, they have a lot of ceramic tile or they have shingle roofs. The law was really intended for something that didn't meet the South Florida Building Code. It was really intended to bring it up to a better code standard of a, and meeting the South Florida Building Code, is what the bill says. And we couldn't deny them, or, I mean, the HOA couldn't deny them for that purpose. Also, I have a question for Mr. Quigley. When I inquired quite some time ago about the process in a PRD, Planned Residential Community Development, rather, and I asked you, I guess it was back in May 30th, 2023, about this, because there was a lot of discussion with our homeowners association. Do you recall that you replied to me in a, an email?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'm gonna read the email and it's dated May 30th, 2023. Town approval, and it says, Dear Councilmember Starkey, town approval of each new residential development is granted by way of site plan approval. The site plan comprises of entire package of development, including engineering plans, lighting, landscaping and architectural, et cetera. The Forest Ridge development was approved with model units, each model having either a concrete tile or barrel tile roof. I do not see anything in the approval site plan packages that contemplates roof styles other than concrete tile or barrel tiles. Note that the approval site plan may be modified as provided by, and I think both have concurred that it requires a site plan modification in section 12-374, Site Plan Modification Plan. Certain minor amendments can be approved administratively by the town staff, but others may require a review by the Planning and Zoning Board and approved by town council. And you signed your name. I read that verbatim in front of the HOA because I wanted them to know what the process would be in the future. And their reliance was now coming forward with us. And Mr. Finer had given an email to Mr. Weinthal, our town attorney, that concurred with the process in his email. So I'm gonna submit this for the record as well. I'm sorry, Mayor, I read it in, but I don't have a copy.
I'm sorry, I'll object to that being admitted into part of the record unless you're willing to step down and vote and be a witness. Councilmember Starkey, town council members who are voting are now allowed to put documents into the record and become part of the evidence.
So Mr. Finer is correct in that statement, but you did read it. So it will be recorded in the minutes for this meeting and it will be recorded in the court reporter's minutes. But he is correct that it cannot be admitted as an exhibit to the application.
Okay. And I, okay, for that purpose, I will add that it is on public record. It's on our server. If anybody does want to read this in the future, it's a public record and I'll be happy to provide it for them as well. In fact, Mr. Finer, in his backup, it said recently, the homeowners association adopted a declaration in the individual homeowners and choose to install metal roofs on their home and they, instead of a tile-type roof. But he further states that it is therefore necessary to amend the site plan to allow the site plan to allow for metal roofs, so the site plan can be consistent with the recent amendment of the homeowners' declaration allowing metal roofs to be installed should the individual homeowner desire. So he, it is in your backup, that was the big packet that was there as well. So he concurred with that and that finding. After, Mr. Quigley, after you provided me that, nobody had applied at that point in time for a metal roof. Mr. Pataki, Mrs. Pataki didn't apply for a metal roof until well after, almost a year later. So from what I understand, did you share your findings with the town manager and the town attorney about the process?
Yes, we had discussions about the appropriate process for this situation.
Okay, what do you recall regarding the process? Do you recall that?
What sticks in my mind primarily was the issue of who is eligible to be an applicant for a site plan, new site plan or an amendment to a site plan, and it had to be the owner of the property, had to be the signatory.
Okay, as opposed to like the whole HOA?
Correct. An HOA could serve as the owner's agent, or just like, you know, an attorney serves as the agent to, you know, to a homeowner, but they could not be the applicant.
Okay, thank you very much. Also, Mr. Lemack, I'm sorry. Did your staff and the town attorney also advise me as to the proper process by which the town code regarding a PRD site plan could be amended?
Yes, just as Mr. Quigley had stated, yes.
So that was part of our conversations?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask our building official, William Diaz, if he could answer a question for me. As an expert, and you've been sworn, is it your opinion that the current roofing material of a cement tile or barrel tile roof meets the requirement of the South Florida Building Code?
Yes.
Does the proposed metal roof meet the South Florida Building Code as well?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, those are a few of my questions. The other thing I would have comments to, if the council wants to ask other questions of anyone else's, I'll go after they ask their questions.
Anybody else? Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, you said the development was, what year, 1980?
I think it was 99, 98?
98 is when the development was first completed. There's a, there's a Florida, there's a bill of sale deed recorded in 1998 from the developer to the prior owner before this came in.
I moved in in 1990. I'll just have you know. So it was approved in 89, 88, not 90.
So that particular house, you're out of order, sir, please.
Don't interrupt.
Okay, so it was 1990?
1998. From the research that I have done on the Broward County Property Appraiser, when you look at the Ridge of Nob Hill development solely, and that's the sole one I'm looking at, especially where my clients were, there's a deed from the developer to the first owner of the home in 1998, and then my client purchased the property two years later, or in 2010, and about 12 years later.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because there's eight, I'm sorry, there's eight sub-sections.
Michelle has the floor. You're done, okay. Vice Mayor, you have any questions? Go ahead.
Okay.
Keep going if you want, I mean-
Yeah, if you don't mind, Mayor, I'll start.
How much longer do you think you're going to use?
I don't know, an hour or three? I'm joking.
You'll excuse me, I'll leave.
No, I hope to wrap this up pretty quickly. Generally speaking, the Forest Ridge master plan development was approved in the early 1988. So that was the master plan development, and, you know, Mr. Finer is correct that the Bridge of Nob Hill was, it came later, and that was approved at a later time. But it was a part of the overall master plan, they just didn't have this specific site plan done. They had the PRD done, but not the site plan itself on that subdivision. There's eight subdivisions in that, and I also want to talk about the fact that my family and I moved in in 1990 into Old Orchard. And my family and I have been actively involved in the community from many activities, whether it be holiday parade, which some of you have attended in the past, festivals, egg hunts, car shows, women's clubs, dinner groups, and the like. And I will tell you that there's 1,584 homes, to the best of my knowledge. Within the approvals of the PRD, there was a design criteria specifically, and it is right on every page of the site plan models where the roof materials are specifically designed and into the site plan that was approved for cement tile or barrel tile roofs, cement. And over three decades, the community of Forest Ridge had abided and maintained the beautiful and welcoming community and maintained a very robust property value, as that's been stated earlier. And whenever there was a few inquiries about a metal roof from time to time, the Architectural Review Committee would usually deny it based on the fact that our documents, declarations, didn't permit it. Times they do change. This is the first attempt to actually change a site plan with a site plan modification, and they're correct to say that. The Forest Ridge HOA and the Architectural Review Committee would only approve the barrel tile roofs before to match the architectural design. If it was a Mediterranean, then it had the Mediterranean barrel tile roof. If it had a traditional style or known as Cape Cod style, it would have the flat tile roofs. Over time, each had been, as long as it was a cement tile roof, they've been allowed to modify it to a cement tile roof. The HOA also conducted their survey a while back. And yes, there was only 400 that had replied to the survey itself, but I want you to understand that when they applied to the survey itself, a lot of people, they were just going by the emails or postcard that came out, a lot of people didn't reply. So you only had that 400 out of the 1,584. So when you look at that, they want you to believe that 75% of their community voted for it, but that's not 75% out of the 1,584. It's only 75% or 76% out of the 400 that did reply. I will honestly say, there's only been about 10 inquiries that I'm familiar with in asking the building department and planning and zoning from time to time, and even some of the residents who are, was on the Architectural Review Committee. How many people had applied over time? The original president had also told me that there were not that many applications for a metal roof. Overwhelmingly, I have had people tell me they do not want a metal roof. They don't, it's not that they don't like metal roofs, and personally, I like metal roofs myself. But within the Forest Ridge community, they felt it would change the harmonious and consistency of the metal, of the development and the designs that was originally done. My concern on this is you have one person coming forward trying to amend an entire site plan for an entire community of 1,584. You heard that there may be a few more that want to, and that might have had one on, I think there's one on hold that is maybe pending the outcome that would apply. But the consideration that, and I'm going to listen to my council members on this too, before I make my final decision, because I've always weighed my evidence at the time of hearing, and that means I need to hear from them as well. I just wanted to set the record a few straight things about both the Florida statute, about the public records that have been submitted, and the emails that have been submitted. That in my 24 years of serving as a town council member, I've never seen such a thing, to be honest. I've never been disrespected by a few peoples as I had by a few, and I just hope that when we move forward with this, they'll bring harmonious acrimony back to our community again, and that whatever's decided by our council, that we can move on, because the past three years have been very difficult for our community, kind of divided everybody.
Thank you. I just wanted to make it clear on two things that you said. It was very clear in the backup and in the information that was given to us that the numbers of the survey did not try to tell us that that was the whole community. If you read it and you studied it, you knew exactly the numbers, what the numbers were. And also that it's very clear, based on what the attorneys have told us about the Florida law pertaining to the HOAs and not to the community, so I just wanted to mention that. It is unfortunate sometimes when people get a survey, you know, we have a tendency to think, oh, it's junk mail, and you throw it away. Or it's not that important to me, I'm not going to respond. So those people that fought enough to respond need to be respected for the decisions that they made. I don't know if this fits in to the, to the thing at hand, because you said something about the roofs not, wasn't the issue, but I think it is, to a certain extent. I have seen some of the most beautiful metal roofs in my neighborhood go up that are absolutely stunning. They have texture, they have color, they're really nice. And we have to know that roof technology has drastically changed since the Forest Ridge community was developed. You know, approving the site plan amendment, which would allow the applicant to install a metal roof, I think it would be in harmony with the surrounding properties in the community from the point of view that as we, we can't be stagnant all the time. We need to move forward. We need to look at what is best for ourselves, and maybe the metal roof will stand up better in a storm. I think we received some testimony on that. I find the addition of a metal roof in this site plan amendment to be aesthetically pleasing. I don't have a, personally, and this is a personal opinion, I can't give you any factual, you know, but that it is, it would not diminish or devalue the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, the cost of the roof itself, even though it will bring insurance costs down a little bit, is very high. And unfortunately, under present circumstances, it might even go higher. But I think that introduction of, or allowing metal roofs provides an overall benefit for all the surrounding communities, so I am tending to be in favor of this amendment. Marlin?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to have to totally agree with everything you said on there, Mayor. I think these, so much of this is subjective, but you can't argue that it isn't a more durable roof, that it's a better roof, that it costs more. And there's a lot of beautiful designs on the metal roof. Years ago, I didn't like them when they first started coming out being popular. I've seen so many of them now, they've grown on me. I like them. It's the better roof. I'm sorry that you all are having to go through this to get a permit for a roof. In my opinion, you shouldn't be up here in front of us on this. Especially if your association has already agreed to allow it, you shouldn't be here in front of us on this. I'm sorry about that, but I have to support this. I can't, I haven't heard a reason why I would not support this. So, you know, you know where I'm voting on this. I support this, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I kind of have to agree with Councilmember Lewis and the mayor. And upon listening and looking out here, I see these few people, wonderful that you came out, and it's really wonderful that you're here. But if there were so many people that didn't want this, this place would be packed. They'd be here screaming and yelling, it's horrible, I don't want it, it's going to be miserable, it's going to low my values and stuff. And I know we did have one gentleman who feels that way. He's entitled to his feelings. But I, I don't see where this is going to ruin anybody's area or their development, and I think that no real reasons were given here for not to give you approval, so I'm going to vote yes on this.
Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor. After looking at everything that was put in front of us, I know back then, we didn't have as many hurricanes that we've got, that we have nowadays. And I know that reading through some of this, I came across where you have fuel tanks in the ground. So I take it that's for Generexes. When the development was developed, I'm sure those weren't even in the plans. Same way with the double-pane windows and doors, the storm shutters, solar panels. So as we move forward into time, when new technology comes out, I feel this is something that maybe your homeowners need to look at, because with everything of the cost and everything, I think with the insurance and everything, it's also going to be a win-win when you're, have went through something like that. And I'm not debating whether the tile roof or the concrete or the shingles is any better than the metal roof, but if it's something that's offered out there, and it's something that you can afford, and it follows the criteria of our codes and regulations and everything, then I support it. Thank you, Mayor.
So usually what happens at this point, and we usually collect all the evidence that we've had at the time of our hearing, and a lot of new evidence has been presented to us at this time. We have, as you can see, this is just this agenda item. This is it. This is the one item that's in our backup. So there is a lot of substantial evidence that has been submitted to, one, identify the proper process by what our legal has told us what we needed to do and how we needed to do it. I've heard, like I said, from the building officials, from staff, and from experts. My family even owns a roofing company. My son is a general contractor. He builds homes. And a lot of the homes that he builds, he puts metal roofs on. So it's not like I'm opposed to metal roofs at all. It's just that in this particular community, there has been overwhelmingly a lot of people who didn't want a metal roof to even be a part of it. But after they listened, I think, obviously, there's all the people who have told me they didn't want it, and I could say there was probably 100 or more, they're not here. They're not here. And if it meant that much, as we all know, they would speak out, unfortunately. And considering the evidence that's been presented, in conclusion, I simply put my constituents usually first. constituents usually first in consideration, the law of the town of Davie, the code of the town of Davie, and the law of the state of Florida. So when we look at all these things and it's time to move forward with the process, I listened to both sides. And I really want you to know that it's been difficult. I'm sure it's been equally difficult for the Pataki's as well. And I understand that the will of the people have spoken here, the experts have spoken, and it seems like my council's spoken. And we usually all stick together in the way we go about doing things and we weigh the evidence at the time of hearing, which was now. So I guess I would go along if somebody wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Just to reiterate, it's a motion to approve S. Let me grab it.
I don't have it in front of me.
I got it for you. It's a motion to approve item number four, Site Plan SP 24-052 Pataki. Councilmember Lewis made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
She beat me to second.
All right.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So before you leave.
I have something else.
Wait, I just wanna do two things. One, so that you know what's going on, I'm gonna request, I was gonna do it under my comments, but I'll do it now, I request a workshop by the town council and staff to discuss this issue, to solve it, so we don't have to have this problem again. And we can, you know, move forward from this point. And I just, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of the fact that I am going to seek that. And in the meantime, legally, does this set the precedent that other people that want metal roofs can go forward and apply?
This is present setting for Forest Ridge. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So those people don't have to agree.
So Mayor?
Wait a minute. Well, did you answer a question?
So this is present setting for Forest Ridge. So if someone were to apply for a metal roof tomorrow, they would just apply for the building permit. They don't have to go through, this is just Forest Ridge, not the town as a whole.
Right, just Forest Ridge, right.
They do not have to go through this whole process as your vote tonight is present setting for Forest Ridge.
May, I have a question.
And just think, you've been through a lot, but you have broken ground for other people and I'm sure they appreciate what you've gone through.
Yeah, Mayor?
Yes.
We must be reading each other's mind because I was gonna ask, and I spoke to Alan also about a workshop that might be necessary, and I spoke to the town manager. But my understanding is that we needed to have the workshop so that we would then again look at the code as it relates to this and define a little bit better whether, what defines substantial?
What did I just say?
A substantial change.
We're gonna discuss everything.
Yeah, but I didn't think that they were allowed to go forward until that had been...
No, because he just said it's a precedent setting, yes.
So, so yes, ma'am, it is present setting. So it would be futile to, if someone else were to make the application tomorrow, to have them go through all this, as you guys would have to approve it if the application came in Forest Ridge.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Let's move on. And thank you to those residents who came out to speak. We appreciate it. Okay, now we got next public hearing. This is second final reading of Code Amendment Number Five on the agenda. Mr. Weinfeld, will you read the ordinance by title?
Yes, Mayor. In reference to the town of Davie, Florida, amending the following sections of Chapter 12 Land Amendment Code, Article 12 subdivisions, site plans, and certificates of use, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
If there's any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item, you can come forward at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or discussion for town council?
I mentioned to, I think, the town attorney regarding this one. If I am understanding, and I can't pull it up quick enough because it's on the iPad, I can't just click to it. Does this take away from the town council having to review? And it gives it administrative?
Let me pull this up, please. Give me a couple minutes.
It's regarding the Live Local Act?
This is the cloth that keeps on giving.
I'm trying to pull up the backup, just give me a second.
I know, it was hard on this time because we couldn't just click it. I got it.
Yes, there was an issue of uploading it this time around, yes.
Alan, look at the third bullet. Third bullet on the key point.
Yes, I'll just read the third bullet and to the record. The proposed ordinance will require projects submitted pursuant to Section 1, Forest Statute 166.014151, subsection seven, to complete the site plan review and public participation processes in the usual fashion. But the final determination on each qualifying project will be made by a town administrator or designated at an administrative public hearing.
In relation specifically to what?
The Live Local Act. The Live Local Act.
Oh, okay.
So my concern, you know, I mean, when I first approved it, because we did approve it on first reading, I didn't quite, I guess, I did a little bit more research and thinking about it. And it concerns me only because if we're, usually with any development, it comes before us for a hearing. So with the Live Local Act, is this complying with, as I understood it before, this is now I, we're complying with the Live Local Act by making it an administrative hearing instead of coming to council for...
The ordinance presented before you puts the town in compliance with the Live Local Act, yes, ma'am.
Okay, but no more? Just the way the legislation read?
We didn't take any, are you asking if we took additional steps? Though we, the ordinance was drafted to comply with the Live Local. We did not go, you know, outside the limits of that.
Okay, so the fact that, I guess I wasn't familiar with the Live Local Act taking away the council's ability to review the site plans, or I know that we couldn't deny them on height or density, but we could still review it as far as site plans?
If you want, council could make a motion to table the item, and I'd be more than happy to draft a legal memorandum on this issue for you.
So let me ask David. When you reviewed it, do you see that it's just in compliance with the law or does, you know what I'm saying, right?
It's in compliance with the state statute, but the intent is to provide a review process that provides the maximum benefit to the town while still being in compliance with the statute. The statute does, in fact, require that the process for Live Local development be administrative in nature. And I didn't want anybody to be under the impression that that's just a building permit. Requiring a site plan approval process, even if it's administratively approved, is far superior than just having the project approved by building permits without the coordinated review that happens with a building, with the site plan process.
So my concern too is for transparency purposes and public participation. If we go about it in this regard and the way you're setting forth an administrative process, it doesn't allow for public participation or, and it's strictly administrative.
It does, doesn't it?
Actually, that's one of the, we're adding to this, that the public participation process applies to this administrative site plan review. If we didn't have passed this ordinance, there wouldn't be any public participation process. It would just be building permits or some other kind of administrative process.
So we still wouldn't have an ability for council to review it, right?
And that's correct, but that's...
Architecturally, we can't.
But that's because of the stat...
And that's the only thing we have...
Listen to what he's saying.
It's 100% because of the statute, the effect of the statute, not because of this proposed ordinance.
But if, Mayor, you're saying, if we change this the way you're saying it, then the public would have input on it.
The public's gonna have input anyway.
No, well, that's what I'm saying.
He said they were including public participation in it.
But it's taking away council's approval by...
Well, have you read the Live Local Act?
That's what I'm saying. The Live Local Act is doing that. But we're trying to make it so that the public would have participation. I'm just asking because the merrier is confusing.
Right, so the, when the statute was adopted, the town had no process for this, for this completely new type of review process. So by creating one that's administrative and meets the test of the statute and provides for public participation in the fashion that we normally use, it, I thought created the best scenario possible under the statute.
So I really can't support it now because I do believe that the town council still has some authority, even with the Live Local Act. Under certain provisions, we can look at design criteria that we think is good, but we can't, it's height and density that they specifically looked at. And with them amending, again, Live Local Act, the legislation that's up there said it can even go into single-family neighborhoods now. So that's concerning. That's why I would want it back in front of council to make sure and ensure that we will make sure that it's consistent with what we want. And they can tie our hands in one direction, but I'm not willing to give it all away.
If you're asking for me to draft a legal memorandum, I'm more than willing to do that, I just need time.
I've read it.
I think...
I'm gonna vote no.
It's gonna, I think it should stand as it is.
But for those reasons and not being transparent, I'm gonna vote no.
It's, it will be transparent in the sense that everything that we do is open to the public as, you know, on our website, the information will be there, there'll be a public participation portion, so, and we as council members could go to the meetings. Right?
Yeah, but we won't be able to say anything.
I won't say it. Okay. Any other questions? Does anybody wanna make a motion?
Motion to deny.
Is there a second? That lacks for, doesn't go for a lack of a second? Would someone like to make a motion to approve on a second and final reading, Code Amendment Number Five?
Motion to approve. Item number five, Code Amendment, on second reading.
Carol, second it. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
No.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That concludes the public hearing. I don't think we have to take any time on Number Six. All those in favor of electing Susan to continue being our Broward League of Cities appointment?
Yes.
Do we have to vote on that?
No, Mayor, but we need the first alternate and the second alternate also.
Yeah, okay, that's, should stay the same. Okay.
And who was?
Huh? Who was?
It was Vice Mayor Hatton and Councilmember Lewis.
Right. Leave that as it is.
Yeah.
Okay. We have board and committee appointments and planning and zoning board term expirations after conferring with the clerk. As long as everybody wants to retain all their appointments and there are no changes, we can approve them all with one vote. Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the appointments?
I'll second it.
Planning and zoning and board and committee appointments.
I'll second it.
May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Whitman?
Yes.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Councilmember Starkey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hatton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Just to mention, we have the Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation that was on this agenda. New business. Mr. Voight.
Hello.
Hello.
Jonathan Boat, your town engineer. I'm here to share some of the details of the turnpikes.
Be careful because we may start throwing rocks.
Yes.
We know you're just the messenger, but this is not good.
Okay, so, well, I'll share just some of the details of the turnpike, PDE and study for a new interchange at Sterling Road that they're proposing and will be bringing out to the public. I wanted just, the screen that here shows you just a overall study area, which goes from South 58th Avenue all the way to just east of the State Road Seven. And this just kinda gives you a big picture of what that interchange improvement concept would look like. North is up in this particular situation. You have Southwest 64th where there's going to be a signal proposed, the bridge, and then another signal on the other side, as well as a flyover that you can see in this. And so just to give a, another point in this particular issue is that there's a, you've already made a consideration of this back in 2006 where they had done a PDE study originally as well. And council was, back then, was concerned about sound walls, it was concerned about the landscaping that was provided, and they didn't really want to see any improvements west of the turnpike. So that was back in 2006.
I remember that. We were opposed to that tremendously.
So I'm sure this concept has some different changes to it, but just to show you, I just wanted to go through some of those, some of those concepts. This right here is the interchange at North 64th Avenue, which would show a southbound on and off ramp that would be there with a signal. So that's proposed there. And then on the east side of the turnpike would be the northbound on and off ramps with a signal, as well as a flyover to the casino to keep that, the people that are going to the casinos, Seminoles Casino, off of Sterling and have a direct route in and out, which is that yellow pathway that you see there.
So this, this shows east of the turnpike?
Yep, that's the east, and the previous one was 64th, which was just west of the turnpike. And then the bridge itself is going to be new. It's gonna be brand new and it's gonna be widened from the six lane configuration to an eight lane configuration. And it's also going to have combined pedestrian and bicycle shared paths on each side with a wall separating for safety. I thought I took this one out.
I wanna...
And then this one's probably not there, and I thought I took it out, but maybe I didn't. This is just to show that even there's improvements at State Road 441 to create additional congestion management by adding left turn lanes in the east and westbound direction, as well as a right turn lane addition to improve the intersection at that point, or at that intersection.
So what is the impact gonna be on Davie?
So just to talk about some of those impacts that I can see is, you can, that property that's just, just west of the turnpike has been purchased by the Seminoles as part of their improvement and they're, they would be putting that, the on and off southbound ramps, they would be considering a sound wall around that area. And because of the close proximity of that, of that signal on 64th, you may need, there may be some access changes at 54th Avenue that they'll be looking at as well and sharing. But they have to study every intersection and see what those impacts are. Some of the other interchanges that, not in Davie, but on the other side of the turnpike, their access changes to the churches are occurring. They might...
Can you speak louder, please? I can't hear you.
Yeah, yeah. Some of the, some of the churches there, the one on the corner probably is gonna get bought out and purchased to be able to do the northbound on and off ramp. And some of the access there is going to change where it's only gonna be a right in, right out. Really doesn't affect Davie, it really affects the churches. The west, the only impacted neighborhood is the, is the northwest corner of the neighborhood with some possible changes in the access on 54th. The west, the only impacted neighborhood is the, is the northwest corner of the neighborhood with some possible changes in the access on 54th. They'll review 58th, they'll review 54th. And, but basically, that's what I see there. Some of the benefits that the town would probably see is Griffin Road interchange will improve. The congestion at Griffin Road interchange in the turnpike will get a lot better. You'll have better access to the turnpike for the community. And-
Jonathan, Mayor, it's Rick. Just to add, to make sure, the blue that you see on the screen is the land that the Seminoles, it was a former trailer park that was put into trust. And that's, that blue is where they've had a number of interested submittals to do a number of different commercial and/or residential properties. So what you would see here is that trailer, old trailer park that's now in the trust, the Seminoles Trust, would, what it's depicting is, would go away. And I don't know whether they're showing that, Jonathan, as retention and as blue-
Yes, they're gonna, yeah, it's gonna be-
So that would become water and retention for the project?
Oh, that's all water, okay.
Water, right.
Pond 1 and Pond 3, Pond 2, yes, those are all water areas to be able to handle additional drainage in the area.
Right, which would-
Yeah, we knew this is, I mean, I'm sure the hard rock had a lot to do with this.
Yeah, and as, and as you see at the end of the bridge to the westbound, which would create a signalized intersection, correct, Jonathan, at 64th Avenue?
Yes.
As you came off. So I just wanted to clarify, 'cause sometimes all the ramps and variations-
Isn't, wasn't a light at 64th Avenue one of the requests of some of the residents?
Well, that depended on the development that the Seminole Tribe was proposing to develop there, but it seemed to be too close, so they were, the concept would have been moved to another intersection further down. But it never got to that point. The only way that makes this work is by the off-ramp.
So you have some, so you have a lake there then, that protects some of those neighbors a little bit?
As well as, I would assume that they're also gonna consider a sound wall.
I was gonna say, are we gonna get a sound wall?
That entire, that kind of a yellow line, they would, they would be considering a sound wall all along that property between the houses and the ponds.
What, the yellow line?
Oh, I guess the outline between the-
No, the green-
There's ponds and the homes.
There's the green, little bit of green space surrounding the lake, and that's what is flush against the residents.
Right, and there would be a sound wall most likely proposed in that area.
You're saying most likely. Can we find out for sure?
To me, that is something that is definitely gonna be something that they're going to be doing.
Well, I see a yellow line there, so I'm, but I don't see a key to depict what that is.
They're not showing it, but this is again a study. And as they come through, they're gonna be talking about, yes, they're gonna do the sound study on there. And to me, like all the other projects where there's no, there's nothing but traffic between homes in there, that, in that distance away, a sound wall's gonna be proposed. What height and those types of things, that will all come out, and those are the times that we're gonna come out and speak to it as well.
Right, and if I could just add, Mayor Rick, again, the reason for the presentation is because Councilmember Whitman, as a representative to the MPO, it seems like that may be a discussion item that's coming up, and I, she'll needs to have council direction should she ask to be able to speak on that. And it's still very early in the process. It's PD and E, right, Jonathan?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
So a number, the number of the technical parts are long, far away, but it was just an early way that, that I believe that the inquiry might be asked, and I believe that she would like to know council's position. I don't, if I could assist you.
Well, I personally, I'm not thrilled about it. I don't know what we're gonna do. I mean, we held it off a long time from the first time that they did it. I'm mostly concerned about the impact to our residents. I wanna know where the sound wall is gonna be in relationship to our residents. Is it gonna be close to the road? Is it gonna be on the other side of the lake? Actually, if it's closer to the road, it should probably help a little bit more. I don't know. Because sound also travels over water.
Yep.
So.
But that will, they will come with a study and show, and the public place it in the best location and those types of things, and what height. All those things will come as part of the study, 'cause they, they have to do the study. And so this is the very beginning, and they're coming out to share with you a concept for, for that to do that.
The extent of that off-ramp is unbelievable. And they got bike paths.
Well, yeah, they're continuing that connectivity of multimodal, but that's just, that's a minor portion of it. It's more of, of just improving congestion throughout this entire area of our, of the town, as well as the, of your cities in the area.
And Jonathan, the other, the other readings that I have is that this was also an attempt to alleviate some of the congestion on Griffin Road.
You said that, Griffin Road, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul.
Yes. So, yeah, it's just, if they, you know, they're gonna explore all the impacts.
Were they ever gonna do anything about the Griffin Road exit, changing that at all?
They're, they're coming in with, with minor adjustments now, and they're gonna further study it some more, but they are, there is, there are improvements coming in, I believe, starting within a year, within a year. They're doing, they're-
I'd like, you know, I could put that off too, 'cause then it would be nice to see how it does alleviate it, and if it does alleviate it to a great extent, they may only need to put another lane in or something. I don't know.
They are adding off-ramp, right turn lanes, additional to, one in each direction. They're doing that as part of this original. But they're doing, they're just looking at more.
Okay.
So I have a question. It, we have a lot of congestion of the road cut-throughs that come on 58th and 64th all the time. So in your opinion, does this help alleviate that? Is that the intent with that new ramp?
The intention is to, to reduce the congestion of everybody coming on the turnpike. To, to, because there's such a great need, because there's such a long distance between Hollywood Boulevard and Griffin as your two choices. And they've always seen that the congestion at these two locations are just overwhelming. And so where do they put it? Do they put it at shared and do they put it at Sterling? Where's the best place to be able to do that? And the, reason they see Sterling is, is because they can also pull all those cars that are on the turnpike that are, that are on 441 and the Griffin that are going to Casino, and they're giving them that direct flyover from the turnpike right into the, to get them off. And that, there's an advantage there, and that will also help with congestion in the area as well.
And that was the key point.
Yeah.
We knew this was coming. The Casino wanted that flyover into their property, and money rules.
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna cost a lot of money, and their comment is, is the Seminoles, if they want this too, they're gonna have to participate as well. They're participating with land, and I'm sure they're gonna have to give money if they, but all in all, that's what this is all about, is congestion management in the area.
So when do you anticipate that we'll have a presentation on it?
They're coming in in the next couple of months, and they'll be having public meetings on this. There is a schedule in there. I just didn't, I just didn't include it. I didn't include it, but I certainly can give you their entire presentation, and we'll have that in there as well.
Thank you.
And this also, the bridge is gonna be built in such a way that currently they're widening the turnpike to eight lanes. This bridge is being built because they're gonna come from eight lanes and they're gonna go to 10. So it's also gonna accommodate the 10 lanes on turnpike as well. On, no, on the turnpike, on the turnpike itself. So, yeah, the turnpike, eight lanes, right now, is under, is going to construction, and then their next step would be 10 lanes to there.
Carol?
Yes, I just have a question. Burris Road, the one that runs down by the credit union all the way in the back to the trailer park back there, where all the commercial buildings have been put up, and it runs right next to the turnpike?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know where I'm talking about?
Yes, you're talking about Reese Road in Burris.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, did I say Burris? I meant Reese. I meant the one that goes all the way back there. And any talk about doing anything there? 'Cause I know they had one in one there a while back, and the industrial park that's built up there has gotten quite big. And I'm just curious if anything's been said about doing anything there.
I haven't heard anything from Jeff in regards to more development in the trailer park area, so, right now.
Okay.
Right now, it's, it's status quo.
Anybody else? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do you have our, our feelings?
I do.
Okay.
I'll share them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have our schedule. Oh, Mayor and Councilmember comments. I'm just gonna do some very quick things. It was very interesting. I found out that the Radio City Rockettes were celebrating their 100th birthday. So I put a little challenge out on Facebook that anybody that could tell me what the Radio City Rockettes and Davie had in common, that they would win a ticket to the Jazz Festival. Well, I'm happy to say, follow directions, and sent me an email at the town. And the winner is Richard Tomer. He is a Davie resident, lives in Laurel Oaks, and he'll be joining me at the Jazz Festival with his family. Thank you, Jeff, for going along with me on that. As I already brought up, the workshop-
All right, what's the answer?
Well, I just got finished saying, 100 years!
I didn't even say that.
Oh, right. Hello? And the other one I just wanted to share with you. We had an economic development workshop or convention, whatever you wanna call it, at Long Key on Monday. And I was the opening speaker. And basically talked about the role of women in Davie from our inception over 100 years. And I highlighted a lot of Davie individuals that are in business, the arts, so forth. And I was very, very thrilled that when I was finished, I was presented with a lovely trophy as a lifetime achievement award, as a woman trailblazer. Then, and of course, I saw my, the statue was very similar. It was given out at the police station, police awards yesterday, the eagle with the flag. And I have this wonderful feeling towards eagles, so that was very sweet. And then a representative from Debbie Wasserman Schultz's office got up and read this message. Certificate of special congressional recognition, 25th District, Florida, presented to Mayor Judy Paul for being selected to receive the 100 Years of Trailblazing Lifetime Achievement Award. On behalf of the constituents of Florida's 25th Congressional District, I take great pride in recognizing Mayor Judy Paul for being selected to receive the Women Empower Women in Development 100 Years of Trailblazing Lifetime Achievement Award. We are grateful for your leadership and commitment to public service, and the residents are fortunate to have you at the helm of their community. Your efforts are deserving of the respect and admiration of the United States Congress. Signed, Debbie Wasserman Schultz. I had to share that with everybody. That was, that was really very nice. And then, what happens? They start playing Western music, and who comes out on the stage? Vicky, Becky and the Cloggers. And did a number in honor of the Davie mayor, which I thought was very, very cute, so. And as part of that, I want to give special recognition to Leona Henry. She is just a gem in this town. Without her, I couldn't ever have done this. She helped me write the script. She put all the pictures together in the PowerPoint. And she was there with me to do the presentation. And thank you, Leona. And in giving her those kudos, I embarrassed her by announcing that she had exemplified the women that we were talking about at this symposium, and that she had just received a great promotion within the town that we were very proud of. So that gave me a great deal of pleasure. So congra, thank you again, Leona. I appreciate it. Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments. On March 29th, which is Saturday, microchipping for your pet at the Davie Police Department from 11:00 to 2:00. You must pre-register by March 24th. All information is on the town website. Now, heads up, and beware of April 1st. And I'm gonna tell you a little story. In growing up, me and my brother had a tendency to use the word F-O-O-L-S quite a bit. So my mom would always charge us $5, so even as of today, I still spell it F-O-O-L-S Day. It falls on Tuesday this year, so be aware. On April 2nd, 2025, Wednesday, the Davie Fire Rescue Monthly CPR and AED Class Training is at 6:00 PM, takes place at the Fire Administration Building. You must pre-register on the website. Our community forums, we have two coming up before the next council meeting. First one is on April 10th, which is on a Thursday, at Robyn's Lodge at 6:00 PM. The second one will be at Ivanhoe Community Center on April 15th, Tuesday, at 6:00 PM. I encourage all of you to come out for important information about the town, and as always, there is more information on our website. The first phase of the Town of Davie School Zone Speed Safety Camera Program was activated on March 17th. The cameras started issuing citations to anyone caught speeding near our community schools, which is eastbound on Southwest 30th Street at Novi Southeastern University and University School. The other camera is at northbound on Southwest 133rd Avenue at Flamingo Elementary and Western High School. The speed camera program is to curb speeding in school zones across the town and to protect the safety of our children, residents and school staff. As a reminder, this program is being done in a phased approach, and more cameras will come online, come online throughout the year town-wide. Last but not least, I'd like to wish Vice Mayor an early happy birthday celebration on April 3rd. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Well, I'll beat everybody to it, but I know the mayor had already announced it. We went to the police awards ceremony yesterday, and I have to tell you, I couldn't be more proud. They were so amazing, all the stories that were told and the reasons why they were honored for their extraordinary efforts. And, you know, this is the reason why I think Davie and the residents of Davie chose to be a community-oriented policing. And it just exemplifies how wonderful they treat our community. And thank you, Chief, again for that. I appreciate it. It always makes me happy to go there. I also went, I was invited to go out to Weston's Awards Ceremony for their employees. Mayor Peggy Brown's a good friend, and she said, "While you're out here, please come," 'cause I had an appointment out there. So I attended theirs. It was a very nice lunch. And they are a contract, fully contract city. So most of their recognitions are usually external for, you know, their sheriff and their police and the contractor for cap government and so on. But they do have their own employees as well for, you know, Parks and Rec and some of the others. And it was really interesting to see, and I, I know how wonderful our, what is it? What you wanna call it? I'm losing it again. Grace in her department put on those extraordinary shows, HR, when they do these extraordinary things. So they almost copied some of ours with the superheroes. And I remember when we did that, and I took a picture of it and said, "Yeah, we did that too." So they were really, you know, it was impressive to see, you know, their city and how different it is, yet very similar in the way that they, you know, recognize. And I thought that was very nice to go to that as well. I've been full bloom of going crazy over the legislative issues. There's over 1,800 bills that have been filed, and only 500, just 500, that actually impact municipalities right now. And so we're dealing with everything from sovereign immunity increases, which affect our risks, and also with property tax. I'm thinking, everybody probably heard that as well. And our CRAs, and a lot of other issues that will be hitting us. And so we'll be going up to Tallahassee to fight for that. And it looks like we're finally making traction with the League of Cities, so I would encourage all of my colleagues and our staff members to make sure that they voice their opinion. Your opinion matters to our legislators, just as everyone else does, so that's about it.
Thank you. Carol, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a few things. I'm gonna double-dose on Leona and Debbie. Also, can you pass this on to Debbie and Leona, please? Last week, I had the pleasure of standing in for the mayor for the AI conference. I guess that's how you would call it, right, Leona? An AI conference?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, AI conference. Artificial intelligence for a lot of people. You hear it, but you don't know it's amazing. The future, it's just incredible. And Leona and Debbie had big hands in putting on- And, uh, Leona and Debbie had big hands in putting on this conference, it was amazing, the speakers were great, the groups were great, everybody enjoyed themselves. So I want to thank you very much, that was wonderful, we've done, everybody complimented us on how hard you guys worked and how well it was done, so thank you for that. Um, scams, I'm really interested in, in when I hear about a scam, like on, on, on emails or on, you, you, people call you up and ask you for silly things, or they, or they walk up and they say, "You see these little holes around your windshield, well, you know, they're very dangerous, we have somebody coming tomorrow, they'll replace it." You know, yeah, right, keep going, sell your thing somewhere else, thank you, I'm not interested. But the new one that's coming, and it's coming repeatedly, and I just like to mention it to people, and maybe you've seen it, is, um, when you pay on the toll, on the, what do they call that? When you pay on the toll?
Sun path.
Sun path, thank you. You, you get on your email, it says, "Please pay your bill on your sun path, you're, you're very delinquent and we're gonna be in a lot of trouble." And, and, you know, so just delete it, it's nothing we've, it's been checked out, it's not true, it's baloney, they're not gonna come after you and, you know, rip your sun path out of your car and stuff, so just be aware of it, I think you should know, so many people have said, "Oh yeah, I saw that, I got that," so, just to be aware, so. Um, and I want to thank the chief when I did call about someone in my neighborhood that was kinda, we thought was kinda running a scam on our, my neighbors and stuff, he sent some right, right out and I appreciate that, thank you, chief, always. And, um, that's it.
Thank you, Marlon. We've covered everything, right, so?
Yeah, right. I think you, I think everything has, has been covered, so I, I won't take long. I, I do want to comment, though, I, I'm really glad, Mayor, that you brought that up about us doing a workshop on that.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that's important, so we don't go through this in, in the future. I'm really happy that you brought that up, I, I appreciate that. I wanted to, to give you kudos and thumbs up for that, that was...
I get a star?
That, that was good, no, I, I appreciate that. We've had some beautiful weather, love this town, God bless.
Okay, I forgot something that I have to do and get the council, um, input on. Um, I've been reviewing the Public Art Committee meeting, uh, minutes from October twenty-first and February third, and would like consensus from the town council to move forward with , uh, two public art projects that were identified in the public art master plan. If council supports these motions, staff will finalize the open call to artists and post the call for artists to submit their work samples and provide their design templates. One is the, um, Domino's chess tables. This is, uh, mosaic art projects at Banford Sports Complex, Pine Island Park, containing two motions. The first is for the theme to be citrus groves and/or orange blossom mosaics with the tables and benches matching. Let me say, repeat again, this is for, uh, one of the things that came out in the master plan was to do tables for dominoes and chess in the parks for people to come and sit and enjoy. And so the two motions were, one, what was the theme of the table gonna be? And they wanted it to be citrus groves or orange blossom mosaics with the tables and benches matching. And the second motion was to place both tables near the Pine Island Multipurpose Center. The reasoning was to place the tables near a staff facility so patrons could check out chess, checkers, or domino, dominoes, uh, from our staff. And I agree with one at the multipurpose center, but I'd like to entertain Potter Park as a location for the second table for the staff to work with Davie Powell on that particular. So, do I have consensus for move forward with that? That's all, okay, good, thank you. I appreciate that. And one other thing that, um, I wanted to mention, I know, um, Mr. Lewis has been working with me on a project with perennial peanut and, um, what do you call them? Flowers that you spread around?
Highway?
Huh? Wildflowers.
Highway, roadway?
Yeah, that type of thing. And we've started a piece of it, which I told you once before, on Orange Drive, we're gonna be extending that further east. But I noticed something yesterday when I was coming down Twenty-sixth Street, the landscapers were mowing the dirt and the non-grown grass, because it's been so dry, on a very narrow strip of grass between the bike path and Hundred Thirty-sixth Avenue, along the whole route of the, um, Bank Kirk property. And I was thinking that would be a great location to do wildflowers again, um, on that, in that section. So if you could look into that as a feasibility of that and so forth, I'd appreciate it. And with that, we'll move on to Mr. Lemack.
Mayor, I, I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Oh, wha, what's the matter? What?
There were two public art ones that you were...
There's another one here? Domino, oh, the bike rack, I'm sorry. Did I miss a page? Yeah, okay. The other one was for, excuse me, a, um, bike rack pro, project, um, that also had two motions. The first was to recommend an equestrian theme for the bike racks. The second motion was to have the bike racks placed at the multipurpose center and the fitness and aquatic center to start. We'll have more. There are a number of people that ride their bikes to these facilities and through the park that will use them. Also, the bike racks would be decorative near the entryway of our two staff facilities. And when they said an equestrian theme, I think they were talking about horseshoes was one of them, and, um, I think there was another one too, but I don't remember what it was.
You may recall, I brought that back when I went to Tryon, I'm so excited.
That's been there for a long time.
The bike rack that looks like horseshoes, it really is cool, I, I'm, I'm so excited. Yes.
So we got a, okay, on that too? Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, I got so excited that we were almost finished. Mr. Weinfall?
I'm done for the hour, Mayor.
Oh my goodness, I'm not even gonna ask, I'm gonna adjourn.